I'd like to call the March 12, 2020 meeting in the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call on Councilmember Will Litchfield for the invocation.
Please bow your heads for a moment of solace. Thank you.
Tonight, we have a special treat. We'd like to welcome the DH Connolly High School Band. We've got Abby Donegan, who's on the trumpet, Jordan Spangler, who's on the trumpet, Shane Lawrence is on the horn, Jariana Vasquez Soto, who's on the trombone, and Will Sablon, Sablon, who's on the tuba. If you please stand. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was good.
Appreciate it. Thank you to the band director, Caleb Espinoza, too.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover, Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer.
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'll give the manager a moment. A double duty.
Mayor, we need to have a request of the applicant for item number 11, which is the rezoning along Fire Tower Road. That is the ordinance requested by Boppy W. Joyner to rezone 7.426 acres located on the south side of East Fire Tower Road. East of Pittrell Road has requested to continue that item until April the 9th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do you also want to add a Dr. Silvernail?
Oh, yes, Mayor. We'd also like to add an item number 15. We'll have a presentation by Pitt County Health Director, Dr. Silvernail, John Silvernail.
Move to approve both items, both provisions.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be subject to a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Stephen Hardy-Ross.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, staff.
Good evening.
Hope you're all well, healthy, doing fine. I'd like to also let you know that we've already gotten police approval and the city permission for the parade permit for the right of silence come May. I'm being optimistic that everything will be fine and well and healthy by then. This is an annual ride to remember those who have gotten hurt or injured while cycling or being active in our city. I'd like to invite each and every one of you to come out and join with us. It's a 10-mile, slow-paced, no-drop group ride that's police escorted around our city to shine and highlight some of the infrastructure that we have. It's a real easy ride. We'll help you out. We'll prepare for it. So, I know we're two months early on this, but with the city new process, we want to be out there advocating and making sure everything is safe and prepared for that. I was saddened to see that on Arlington Boulevard by Rose High School, we learned that the sidewalk across the street from it wasn't able to be completed because of measurement issues. And I know that Arlington is between Evans and Greenville Boulevard is under construction. So, the route we've done traditionally has been changed, but we'll still be highlighting some of the fine bike lanes that we have now, some of the infrastructure of the greenway, and showing ways to get around the city healthy and actively. So, thank you all for your support. I know several of you have done it in the past. Look forward to seeing you out there. So, any questions, I'll be glad to help in the next two months as we prepare for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy-Ross. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
There are no additional signed-up speakers.
Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period can come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We will move on to special recognitions. Madam Manager.
Thank you very much. Do we have any?
There we go. Awesome.
Kevin. Kevin, why? You're sitting in the wrong place.
Yes. I'm on the spacing.
Right. One of Cheryl, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. One of the real privileges of my service as city manager is to recognize, I'm going to hand this to you, is to recognize our long-term employees and particularly those that have the opportunity to retire from the city. And it's a real honor this evening to recognize one of our truly special employees. I want to recognize Cheryl Tafoya, who retired effective March the 1st of 2020, so about, what was that, about 13 days ago? Is that right? About 13 days ago. Cheryl had a long career with the city in a variety of areas. She worked, she was hired by the city as a dispatcher in 1990. She served as a clerk typist and a crime analyst in the police department. After 13 years with the police department, she transferred to Public Works and served as an accounting technician for Stormwater. Cheryl was promoted in 2006 to serve as the city's sanitation recycling coordinator and served as a liaison to our Keep Greenville Beautiful program. And in 2017, Cheryl served, accepted a position as a sanitation's operator supervisor and maintained that position, served in that position until she retired. She is an exemplary employee, has been an exemplary employee for 30 years, and she truly cares deeply for her coworkers and has provided wonderful service to the city of Greenville. And I hope you all will join me in congratulating Cheryl on her retirement. We have our award to recognize Cheryl for her 30 years of service. I am going to see Delver Bryan or Kevin Mulligan, who has worked with Cheryl, would like to say a few, make a few comments about Cheryl.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you first.
I certainly can reiterate congratulations and much success in your future endeavors. But it's been a pleasure working with you, and you truly have made a difference for the city of Greenville and the Public Works Department. Once again, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a, yeah, a few words about Cheryl. Certainly, besides the exemplary employee, Cheryl has a great sense of humor, a great laugh, and as she told me, she is representing tonight. So...
Always representing.
Absolutely. Certainly, a couple of things that you may not know. Ms. Tafoya's been responsible for all of the Christmas ornaments that were made downstairs, every Christmas season on the tree in City Hall. Those were from recycled Christmas cards that Cheryl handcrafted. Cheryl is the proud mother of two children, Heather Tafoya, a Tar Heel grad, and Mark Tafoya, a Wolfpack grad. So, things will be a little easier at home this month without the tournament. But, so Cheryl will become a grandmother later this, no, next month. April 24th is the due date.
Yes.
I know that because that is my son's birthday.
That's a good idea.
So, Cheryl loves her family and church. In her time away from work, she enjoys solving jigsaw puzzles, singing. Cheryl was part of a Christmas party where she was part of the phonets, and I think we have another member of the phonets in the audience. But word games, listening to audiobooks, fishing in Virginia, decorating and remodeling her home. I will say this, you'll be greatly missed. You've been a great source of entertainment, of professionalism, and her smile and laugh have always been a great part of Public Works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So, congratulations.
Thank you. So, I have the honor of having one additional recognition, and I would like to call forward Chief Brian Betterd along with Fire Chief Eric Griffin.
I'm going to try to hold this thing. There we go.
I'm getting a big one.
I would like to recognize Chief Betterd on his completion of the executive fire officer program at the National Fire Academy. We have a certificate for Chief Betterd, which is provided by the National Fire Academy. It reads, "In recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and the applied research projects, the National Fire Academy, under the authority granted by the 116th Congress of the United States of America, and on recommendation of the faculty, confer the title of executive fire officer upon James Bryant Better with all honors, privileges, and responsibilities therunto appertaining." So, I'd like to congratulate Chief Betterd. I'm going to let him hold this, and then I'm going to ask Chief Griffin if he'd like to make a few comments.
Thank you. This certification that Chief Betterd has is really representative of Chief Betterd himself. It's the excellence of fire service for a fire officer. One of the things of note is that the city of Greenville is probably one of very few departments that have so many executive fire officers in our ranks, and we are very proud of the professionalism that they have shown and that they will continue to contribute to here in the city of Greenville. So, thank you, Chief Betterd.
Let us please congratulate Chief Betterd. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which are appointments. Madam Clerk.
Okay. We've got the Human Relations Council that is assigned to Mayor Protem Glover, who's not here this evening. Next is Police Community Relations Committee, Councilmember Will Bell.
I'd like to continue my appointment to the March 23 meeting, please.
Okay. Also, Youth Council, also assigned to Mayor Protem Rhodes Glover, and we do have one for the Public Transportation and Parking Commission, Councilmember Daniels.
I might like to appoint Bob Edwards.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Edwards.
Okay. And that concludes the appointments for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The following items are included on the consent agenda. Item number four is a resolution accepting the dedication of rights of way and easement for Langston West Phase 2, Phase 11, Section 1, Bent Creek Subdivision Phase 2, Lots 70 through 78, and Bent Creek Subdivision Phase 4, Lots 58, 60, 65, and 66. Item number five is the approval of an application for a North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in support of the development of an adventure park. Item number six is the Town Creek Culver Change Order, 8th Street Outfall. Item number seven is a grant of easement, of utility easement, for the historic Jones Lee House. Item number eight is a grant of amendment to easement for the Piedmont Natural Gas Company for a flare site on Greenville Utilities Commission's wastewater treatment plant property. And item number nine is a grant of easement to Restoration Systems LLC for the Greenville Utilities Commission Nutrient Bank. Mayor, that is the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. Any recommended changes or...
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we'll move on to new business. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing of this evening is an ordinance to annex the Greenville Utilities Commission West Side Regional Pump Station involving .9796 acres located at 1,800 feet north of West 5th Street and 75 feet west of Pallidina Place duplexes. And I'll call to get Lead Planner, Shante Gubi, for that presentation.
This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader in those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is a distraction and makes discussions difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Ms. Gubi?
Good evening. I first want to let you know that I am not sick. I was sick, and I'm getting over it. So, I'm not contagious anymore. This is an annexation to rezone the West Greenville, or the, I'm sorry, the Greenville West Side Regional Pump Station. It's centrally located in the city. It's located just north of 5th Street. It's adjacent to Pallidina Place duplexes, so the property is in the red. The property is just a little under an acre. It's located in Schoolhouse Branch, Hairs Mill Run watershed. It is a tax-exempt property, and officially, what this will do is if there are any calls for service, then City Fire Department or the City Police Department would respond as far as for the pump station, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
One question I had, do you know how long it was in operation, that pump? Is this relatively new?
I cannot say when it was built. I don't know.
Okay. The only question I had is just from the annexation. I spoke with the manager about it this morning. I didn't know if you knew.
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Gubi? All right. Thank you very much. All right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Three years.
Three years?
Three years.
Okay. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhoffer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll move on to item number 12. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the city code by altering regulations related to flag size and permitted locations.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
My name's Brad Seabyore. I'm a planner with the planning division here at the city. So, we've been looking at updating our flag regulations for quite some time now. They're pretty small, and they don't allow us to do quite as many things as we might like to do with flags in the city here. One thing that we currently do not allow is if you look at this illustration on the left, there are those projecting flags that come off the side of a building. Right now, we don't allow that. So, what we'd like to do is we'd like to create a new definition for what we call banner flags. We refer to these as banner flags that would allow local businesses to put projecting wall flags up on the side of their business in this, you know, along the sidewalk and create a kind of appealing visual effect using flags. So, whenever you see, if you look through these regulations and you see the reference to just a flag, you're looking at, you know, the traditional flag pole setup that you see on the right there, and if you see banner flag, we're talking about one of those projecting wall flags. So, just a little more about these banner flags. This is an illustration of, you know, what a typical setup might be like. This is, the way we calculate how many you're allowed to have is based on the building frontage along a street. So, this building's 160 feet long, and we allow one per 25 feet of building frontage. So, this building would be allowed to have six flags along the side here, and you can see that illustrated along here. But more than that, we wouldn't want to just kind of restrict you to having that very wide spacing. I'm sure you've seen this configuration before. As you go to other cities and you'll see like a hotel and it'll have a row of flags above the door. This regulation would allow a business or a hotel or something to do that type of arrangement if they wanted to. So, you know, another thing to note as well is that for our dimensional standards and our location standards, we predominantly took our pre-existing standards for projecting wall signs. So, this won't be like a new style of intrusion onto the streetscape for the pedestrian. You'll experience it the way that you kind of experience current, you know, you might see a business with a sign sticking out the, off the wall. And so, this will have a very similar visual effect, and so it shouldn't have any sort of negative impact beyond, well, I think it'll have a positive impact, but it won't have a greater impact than what's already there in terms of local signs. Another thing that we're looking at is increasing sign allowance. This is just kind of an illustration for what a residential property would be allowed to have is a 24-foot flag, 24-square-foot flag on a 25-foot tall flag pole. But more importantly, we'd like to address the restrictions on commercial flag size. So, right now, a flag on a commercial lot is restricted to 100 square feet, which is okay, but pretty small for comparable communities and other places around the state. What we'd like to do is you see the flag on the left, that's an illustration of a 216-square-foot flag. So, we'd like to make those available throughout the city. The flag on the right is a 1,000-square-foot flag, and we'd like to make those available in very specific locations. And I know that that's pretty overwhelming and a lot to look at, and so what we've done is we've introduced this concept of the highway sign overlay. And so, this is the portion of the city in the city's jurisdiction that runs along the future interstate designation. And so, what we'd like to see is in these really big lots, along interstate standards, you know, future interstates and interstates, we'd like the availability of a much larger flag option. And the reason for this is that these are generally very large lots, and they get set back very, very far, and a lot of businesses like to have very large flags, and we'd like that option, but we wouldn't like it everywhere. We don't want it to overwhelm visually, you know, let's say, the downtown area. We don't want a very large flag like that. And to kind of aid in this concept, we've, we're introducing as well a flag step-back provision. So, for these very large flags, they're going to require very large flag poles as well. So, if you have a flag pole that is over 70 feet tall, what we'd like the property owner to be required to do is to push the flag pole back an additional feet in the setback, an additional foot in the setback for each foot over 70 that that flag pole goes. And that'll mean that these flags aren't pushed right up on the road in this, even in this highway district. At its most recent February Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Smiley?
So, could you go back to the map of the, there you go. So, would you, would this be written in such a way that all interstate-grade roads in the city limits would have this? Are you going to literally have it overlay that specific corridor?
This map is what will be adopted, and so if you have a parcel that is touched by this buffer here, you will be taken into the overlay and you'll have the possibility to do 1,000-square-foot flag on that lot. This map can be amended. It can be, as, you know, as roads change designation or as the council feels like, we can change where these flags are allowed, but this, you know, the thinking was, these will be interstates. They're pretty, you know...
I can just, I agree. I'm just saying, I think there are other, you know, other pieces of road right next to these.
Sure.
That over, you know, in the foreseeable future, they're likely, they might become part of the city.
And we can certainly add to it as they come into our jurisdiction. That's certainly a possibility. This map can be amended at any time that we were to take that in the future.
Good. Any other questions? Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
So, this is just strictly related to size. What about content, anything like that?
No, these regulations are content-neutral. We don't, if you, you know, we're not allowed to regulate the content of a sign. There's some distinction on that, it's a pre-existing distinction on commercial versus non-commercial. So, for instance, our non-commercial flag maximum and our regular flags, instead of being that 216, it'll be 50, which is our existing number. So, we're going to keep that. We're staying there. But in terms of what you put on the flag, we're not allowed to, and we are not proposing to regulate it.
That's curious. Thanks.
Councilmember Smiley?
So, you have some sort of operating definition for what a commercial flag is?
We sure do, yeah.
And what would that be?
Hold on.
Take your time.
Yes, it's just insignia banner, it's basically, it's government, nonprofit organizations, insignia balloons, banners, these are all within that non-commercial designation.
Actually, I was looking for the commercial designation. What is, what constitutes a commercial flag?
It's, the distinction's drawn the opposite direction.
Okay. So, if it doesn't meet the standard of a non-commercial flag...
It's a commercial.
Then it's a commercial flag.
Yeah.
So, you know, so, you know, a Grady White boat, for instance, if they want to put a big flag, big sign, the big flag that says Grady White Boats on it.
Grady White. That's a, that's a commercial, I mean, it's a, it's a business flag, yeah. It's a sign.
And what are the standards for that?
The two, it's the 50s, it's the 50-foot flag in the regular zoning, and...
Would the overlay apply to a commercial flag?
Yeah, the commercial flags are allowed within the overlay as well, yes.
And they could be how big?
It's the same, it's the same either way. Yes, for a commercial flag in the zoning overlay, you could do 1,000 square foot.
Okay. So, a commercial flag in the zoning, in this overlay on the map?
Oh, yeah. We only draw the distinction in the normal...
Could be 1,000 square feet.
That's correct, yes. We only draw the distinction in the, in the rest of the city where we have the pre-existing distinction.
Okay.
We're not introducing any new distinctions.
Yeah, because I'm just imagining some of those large lots could be taken over by, we hope, prominent... we hope, prominent commercial firms that might want to, you know, put up, you know, Mercedes comes to town, they want a great big Mercedes flag.
And this would allow that, yes, certainly.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right. Public hearing's now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or motion.
We'll approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We will move on to item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is an ordinance to designate the Frank Wilson Store located at 401 East, 401 Evans Street and 100 East Fourth Street, and further identified as Pitt County Tax Parcel numbers 38900 and 85107 as a local historic landmark. And again, Ms. Gooby.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
This property, again, is located at 401 Evans Street and 100 East Fourth Street. So, it's located at the corner. This would be Coastal Fog, straight across the street from it. This property was built circa 1899. It is a two-story building, so you have what is now the Globe Pharmacy on the ground floor, and then you have the Corey residence, which is on the second floor. This was the side of the Frank Wilson Men's Clothing Store. I'm sorry, it's going out. I apologize. He was known as the King Clothier of Greenville. He sold men's clothes. The building was also built by an architect who was Hillsey Linsicum, I believe is how you pronounce that correctly, and he was regarded as an important architect in North Carolina. So, this, we should have some photos showing up here. There we go. So, this is a picture, and you can see where it's listed as Frank Wilson, the King Clothier there on the front of the building. And then, this is a little older building here, and it's a little hard to see, but you can see there's actually a crown that he put on the top of this building, obviously to signify that he was the king. And, and we have, thank you so much. And then, we have this picture of the building. You can see where it still has Bradshaw's on it. It was the Bradshaw's Department Store. This was probably, at least to my knowledge, one of the last photographs that was taken before the renovations took place. And so, this is what you have now, and so a lot of the changes you can see are the windows were originally bricked up, those have been opened up, windows put back in them, and then the front has changed. You had this awning here, that awning's been removed, and now you have the front, the front building here with the signage for Globe Pharmacy. The Historic Preservation Commission is charged with preserving Greenville's heritage, and they have the power to recommend local landmark designations. This property was recommended because of its special significance in terms of history, prehistory, architect, and cultural important, importance, and it possesses integrity of design setting materials, feelings, and associations. So, in April of 2019, the HPC Selection Committee identified the property as a potential landmark. And then, in November of that year, they recognized the store to be of the special significance that I just named earlier. In December, the, the owners of the building presented to staff a survey and a research report, which goes to SHPO. SHPO is the State Historic Preservation Office. So, they reviewed that report. SHPO then sent comments back in January. The important thing to remember about SHPO's comments are, they are advisory, but they are non-binding. And so, just a few of the things that SHPO said. The building's first-floor entrance was altered by the owner Frank Wilson around 1917. Through the years, there's been many different changes to the front. As a matter of fact, there was, City Council used to need in that building at one point in time. So, there's been lots of changes through the years. The 20, the 2019 alterations, which is what you're looking at now, what it, what it currently looks like, says it has substantially changed the original and the subsequently altered character of the building. It introduced a nor, a new storefront and a rooftop terrace. It goes on to say that the modern streamlined appearance is counter to the surviving elements, and due to these alterations, the building no longer illustrates the work of the architect. Historic Preservation Commission, at their February meeting, had this come in front of them. And again, it is, they are charged with recommending whether a property should be a local landmark designation, and so at that time, they did recommend five to one that the property should be designated as a local landmark. So, you may ask, why would anybody want to be designated as a local landmark? First of all, you do get a 50% tax deferral on your property taxes, but in exchange for that, any exterior changes to the property or the grounds has to go through the Historic Preservation Commission, and those changes have to be approved by them. So, that's the exchange for the deferral of taxes, and then the requirements that you have to do in order to maintain that designation. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Smiley?
So, the applicant in agreeing to the, in accepting the tax break would agree to maintain the property as, as, as a historic property?
That's correct.
And what, can you go over again what the, what those requirements are?
Well, at this point, what they would be required to do is they would be required to maintain the building as it is right now. So, I guess about in the last year or so, they received some of the side improvement grant funds to help with the work that they did on the exterior. So, at this point, if it were designated as a local landmark, then they would be charged with maintaining that building in such a way that it would still be considered a historic property. And again, any changes would have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission for their approval.
So, it was, so according, if I understand, the SHPO, prior to this restoration, the SHPO considered it to be architecturally significant from a historic, significant from an architectural standpoint. I understand the application in here doesn't necessarily rely on its architecture, it relies on its significance in the history of the city, but is that correct?
It went through when the first survey report was submitted. When that, when that was submitted to SHPO, they felt that the, I guess we could say, the historical component of who was in that building was not strong enough to recommend that the building should be preserved based on who was there. Frank Wilson's store.
So, it was, it was a contributing structure and historically significant because of the architecture of the building?
Right. Well, what they, what they asked was, is that the report be amended to then focus on the architecture itself and the architect who designed the building. And so, that amended report was submitted back to SHPO, and then in the end, they still came back with those same comments in that they do feel like some of the renovations that have been done have, have basically masked or taken away from the architecture that had been there, the original architecture.
So, my question was, before the current renovation, it was considered historic by the SHPO, and that was due to its, it was due to its architecture?
It was considered historic in that it was in the downtown commercial historic district, yes.
And a contributing structure to that district?
I believe it was a contributing structure.
And it's, and the SHPO just no longer believes it to be?
I'll just back up to...
Okay, you don't have to read me their notes.
Right. I'll just put those comments up.
So, my question is, the facade grant that was given to the, by the city to the, in support of the renovation explicitly called for that renovation to be done according to the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic preservation. So, it was historic, and it was conducted, and so, and then it was conducted according to the, a renovation was done to it according to the Secretary's standards, and now it's not historic. Was that renovation actually done according to the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic preservation?
I do not know that it was done according to the Secretary's standards. What I can tell you is that facade improvement grant application was approved and went through the Historic Preservation Commission for the work that was done.
But, I mean, I appreciate that, but the ordinance that grants people his facade grants and the contract that facade grant recipients sign state that they will do the renovation according to the Secretary's standards. And so, my question is, how did it get, how did it, how did that fail, right? If, if it was historic, and we gave them a facade grant that stated they would restore it in a historically appropriate manner, and I guess we approved that and then paid them for doing it, and the SHPO now thinks it's not historic, what, what step, what step went wrong?
I don't know that anything was necessarily that it did wrong. You're comparing, in some ways, you're still comparing apples and oranges in that. The facade improvement grant is to put back the historic appearance of the building or try to restore. So, if you compare what they started out with and then what they did, then that would be a renovation or alteration of the existing building. But, a local, a local landmark in and of itself is a separate designation, so not only is it part of a district, but it's actually a separate, a separate and distinct structure.
So, the SHPO's comments don't prevent us from making it a historic, a local area landmark?
Right.
Even though the SHPO no longer considers it to be historic from an architectural standpoint?
That's correct. They, they offered non-binding and advisory comments.
And so, my question then, and I don't necessarily expect you to answer this, I guess, but it's, I'm concerned that the purpose of the facade grant is to take historic buildings and have them be renovated and remain historic, and it feels like that we have allowed this process to go forward where we have paid somebody to renovate a building and make it less historic than it was before.
What I will say to that is, is that, to my knowledge, the renovations that were done, were done according to the application that was approved.
So, the application that was approved was deficient then? I mean, if the goal of the facade grant is to create a building which remains historic and a facade, and somebody gave an application that, if you say that the work that was done was accurate to the application, then it seems to me that the application must have foreseen that the building would be renovated in such a way that it would be no longer historic.
Tom Barnett, I'm Director of Planning and Development Services. If I may, I'd like to take a, try to have a little input here that may, may or may not help. I hope it does. Essentially, the facade improvement grant, as you say, is trying to make the building be historic in when it's improved and work is done. And the SHPO gets to comment after the work is done, but the SHPO isn't overseeing the work. So, we don't really know what the SHPO's going to say during the work that's going on. We, between staff and the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, there's work going on with the owner as they're doing the work, and as long as they have complied with the application, which was approved by HPC, and they've done the work that was approved by HPC, they get paid, and then we go back to the SHPO, and, you know, they can come back and say, "We don't like it, it wasn't done quite well enough," or something, and we're never sure of that up until that time.
Yeah, well, it's not my intention to punish the applicant. He seemed to follow the rules, got the sign-off, staff approved what he did, HPC what he did. But, my point is that we haven't, we have a funding, a, we have an initiative of a city ordinance, city grant program, which is intended to accomplish a certain purpose that doesn't seem to be accomplishing that purpose. In fact, it seems to have, in this case, undermined the purpose, and so I hope we will take note of that in...
Mayor Collins? Oh, I will, I would like to just interject that Mr. Barnett, Barnett and I had a discussion about facade improvement grants. I did ask that we go out and look at facade improvement grants, programs that are done in other communities, to ensure that we are getting sufficient information at the onset of the grant application to understand what will take place in the building, to, at the building, with the improvements, to make sure that we don't run into something, into a similar situation, so that we have all of the appropriate information going forward. And so, the staff is doing that research to go look at those programs and to take a look. This is a, a, a program that periodically we need to take a look at, and this is the time that we're going to take a look at the program.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none? All right. Public hearing's now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Tony Corey. I am one of the applicants. Stacy and Morris Moye could not be here this evening, they had a conflict. First of all, I want to just thank, thank the city, thank the HPC. We, my partners and I on this building, we created a condominium complex, and, and really, really proud of what, what we've done. We've tried to take an old building that was built in 1899 that could have been and should have been probably torn down. The roof was caving in, it was mold on the inside. It, it needed significant amount of work, significant amount of investment. This process, it took almost two years to do from the time we purchased the building to the time we finished the renovations. Early on in the process, we were told that there were incentives to, to invest, reinvest downtown, help turn it around, make it look better. Those windows in that building had been bricked in for over four, almost 40 years. You looked at the before pictures, and that wasn't real appealing. So, the application for the facade grant was based on, on applying for funds that were available, that, that were carried over from year to year that in a couple, the two previous years weren't used, and we put a significant investment in trying to beautify the downtown and turn, take something that wasn't, that wasn't up, up to standards or could have been improved. This particular building was designed by historic architect, North Carolina architect, Hillsey Lithikin, and he's got a lot of prominent buildings in both Greensboro, Durham, Raleigh area. He designed this building. If you notice in 1899 when they designed it, there was an angled shape in the front. That was modified in the, in the early 1920s, 1930s. What we did is we went back, we, we opened the windows, we followed SHPO standards all along the way, we applied for the, through HPC 40 application, we worked with the HPC every step of the way on not sandblasting, because that wasn't good. We repainted the brick, we, we, we painted the building a certain way that they wanted, we took out the windows, we put in window, win-rated windows. We, we took the front facade downstairs, and we made that look similar to what Three Sisters looked like in the 40s and 50s. Couldn't go all the way back to 1899, but again, we could have torn down the building. So, I, I'd just like to say, you know, we're, my partners and I are excited about what we've done, and we are very appreciative of the HPC on the facade grant, what, what we were able to obtain, and we do believe that from 1899 to 1905, we know that that served as City Hall. So, that's historically significant. It was City Hall, that building, that's where, and then also during that period, Pitt County Education, Board of Education occupied that upstairs. So, you know, we're trying to encourage people to invest and revitalize our center city. We hoping that it's a catalyst, we could have torn it down. You know, I think what SHPO did not like, and I'll just put it right out there, I think the, you know, the, the, you know, the, maybe the, the rooftop terrace piece maybe did not fit in perfectly with them, but again, SHPO is, it's, what they say is not binding. And the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission that we have, that, that, that we conducted, I went through for 18 months, my partners and I proved everything all along the way, and even as of, even with their input, SHPO's input, it was a five, six... And even as of, even with their input, SHPO's input, it was a five, six in favor of, of doing this, of submitting this to council. So, you know, I respectfully request that, I mean, you want, we want more people to invest and not tear things down, and everything in Greenville, unlike Little Washington and other communities, a lot of things have burnt down or been torn down. So if, if, you know, I, I don't know what else to say other than I just wanted to thank you for what, what we have been provided through the facade grant that was available, and I encourage you to continue funding that. That's very important. We need to be encouraging people to invest in our center city. And it might be a minor tax deferral and, you know, we got to maintain the, the building, you know, but I think it's worth the investment that's been put in, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any questions for Mr. Corey? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor. Oh, you have one?
Yep.
We, we've got one question.
It's not a question, just more of a comment. Thank you for your investment in our uptown and what y'all have done to that building. It's great to see, you know, people using it, taking advantage of our facade improvement grants. We don't see enough people do it, hopefully more people will start to take advantage of it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thanks. Anyone else who'd like to speak in, be, on behalf of the applicant may come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Bill, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, we'll move on to other items of business. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a presentation on the 2020 census. I'll call forward Staff Member Marco Castro to provide that presentation. She'll talk a little bit about the process for the census, and she, we can also talk a little bit about any changes about the census due to, due to ECU's sort of movement to move its classes online.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Marco Castro, and I am the GIS technician and planner for the planning department. I have also been one of your representatives on the Complete Count Committee for Pitt County. The purpose of this committee is to connect local organizations together to make sure that everyone is getting countment here. This is very important for Greenville because we are on the cusp of hitting 100,000 people in population, we're so close. So that matters because for every person that's countment, we get $1,623 in federal aid and $205 in state aid. And so those, that money, that aid goes to fund programs like SNAP, Head Start, Pell Grants, the highway planning and construction, so we need that money to come into our community. So if we were to take the 2018, our estimated population, that 93,000, and we were to multiply that by the 1,800 per person, that would mean that our community would receive $170 million in aid. So just a brief timeline of what the census is going on. So on March 9th, online forms and the phones opened, this is the first year, the first time where you can answer the census online. And that web address is very simple, my2020census.gov. So March 12th, starting today through the 20th, people will start to receive their forms and postcards to their homes. April 1st is Census Day. So wherever you live, whoever is living in your house on April 1st, that's who you count in your census. And so this is also important for our ECU students to realize that even though they've been sent home, they need to count themselves as living here, because they would be living here if we didn't have all this going on with the virus. So they can go online, they don't even have to be in the city, they can go online, put in their address here in Greenville, so they get counted here. April 8th through the 16th is when paper forms will be received at homes who have not responded online. So most of our city will first receive a code that they can go online, and they can put in that code, do it all online. If they don't respond online, then they're going to get that original paper form that we're all used to. May through July, if you still haven't responded, then people are going to come knocking on your door. December 31st is when the final report is given to our president. So the city has done a lot of outreach and awareness to try and make sure that all of our citizens know that the census is happening this year and to respond. It started off with our IT department, they completed what's called the LUCA, which is the Local Update of Census Addresses. So they gave our most updated address to the Census Bureau so that we get all of the correct addresses. Everyone is going to get a form to their correct address. We've also been running ads on the city Facebook, the city website, GTV, radio, I know that GUC put an ad in their newsletter that they send to the people that work with them. We are also going to be staffing a Census Live event. Tony Parker, who also works in our planning department, and I will be staffing a table, informational table on Census Day, so April 1st. We'll be doing it in City Hall and also taking it out to Five Points if we have good weather. We also helped facilitate a Census Bus Event, which is a job recruitment event. They're paying pretty good, $1,250 to $19 an hour, and they are still looking to hire people. At that event, we had 48 people apply and numerous more stopped by just to ask questions. In fact, they had a 5% hiring jump because we had that bus there. We've also been directing residents to respond at all city meetings and functions and attending these complete count meetings. But we are not the only ones doing this outreach. There are numerous local organizations like the NAACP, A-Mexican, United Way, NC Corporate Extension, Veteran Services, all of these people are doing their own outreach and awareness. We are also participating in a response rate challenge with the city of Jacksonville. So this is not just us, but all across Pitt County, our response rates have been kind of low. So 2000, our response rate was 65%. It got a little better, 2010, it was 71. Our goal this year is to get 82% or better, 100% would be great. So this is the first year, like I said, that you can apply online. You can also apply through phone or by mail. So this is what most of us will be receiving first, this is an example. It's going to have your census ID, which is your code that you will put online. Again, you don't have to have this code, you can go online right now, and it's all connected through your address. This is what the original form looks like. Some homes will receive both the code and the original form, but the whole purpose of this is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Now I know that we're interested in some numbers, so if we are looking at the response rates for the year 2000, if we had 65% response rate with our 2018, we would have received, let me go over here, $128 million. That's our 65%. Now if we jumped it up, I'm so sorry, that's at 71%. If we had gotten 82%, that would be $139 million. That's a $19 million difference, just jumping it up by 10%. So it's very important that we get everybody counted and aware that this is happening.
So, so Marco, for the council's perspective and for those that are in the audience listening, can you remind everybody the, the methods that can be used to fill, complete the census forms?
You can go back. You can do it online at my2020census.gov, you can do it over the phone, or you can mail back the form that you'll receive. And if you don't do any of those, then people are going to come knocking on your door and you can talk to them. It's also available in 59 languages this year, 59.
And if you don't fill it out, then I'm going to have to dress up as a Marine. And we want Mayor Phillips down in Jacksonville to dress up as a pirate, so I cannot urge the citizens enough, if the money isn't enough, let's make sure that Mayor Phillips down in Jacksonville dresses up as a pirate, and I don't get dressed up.
Exactly.
If we could share one more information, I'm going to just reiterate what Marco has said, Mayor. Full-time, on-campus students at East Carolina are considered residents of Greenville, because they are here on April the 1st. And all of those students that while, because of some recent changes, because of what's going on with the virus, those students may not be physically located in Greenville, they count as our residents, and we need those students to complete the census form now. And so the university will take care of those that are in university dormitories, but those that are in private housing or in single-family housing in many of the neighborhoods around the community, they need to complete the census form. We, and we are working closely with East Carolina, we've raised this issue to East Carolina as well, to make sure that they are sharing the information with their students. It's important to point out, I know everybody knows it, but I'm going to say it, the census is done once every 10 years. We don't have the ability to redo a census in five years because we don't like the numbers. The census is done once every 10 years. It is imperative that we do the best job we can to get everybody in this community to complete the census form.
10 questions, 10 minutes, very simple.
10 minutes. How many questions?
10 questions.
10 questions.
Do we have, or do they have any access as far as the, have we talked about the students as far as access to their emails? Because I'm sure they're going to be frequently checking their emails.
Right, we have had, we have been since, since late yesterday afternoon when we got the word, a word that ECU had extended spring break and has converted their in-person classes to online, we have asked them to work with us closely, to share information with their students. They communicate a lot with their, with Instagram and social media. We have also, will be providing them with the information that they can email out to the students, to get the students to complete the forms.
So I guess, you know, from a standpoint, when they send out the census, is it a census ID that comes in the mail? Is that what it is? Is that their only method of getting that, the census ID, or is it sent in a different manner?
You can go online right now, you don't have to have this census ID.
Okay.
I could log onto this computer right now, go to my2020census.gov, it's connected through your address.
Okay, all right, so basically, you know, if we can do a huge blitz through, maybe if they can send something out via email and do some social media things as well, multiple times, just to continue to remind them over and over, maybe they can make it a prerequisite for them to pass their classes, or something of that nature, if anybody's listening here. You know, extra credit, if you fill out the census and make Greenville a better place, hey, I don't know, we could work something out.
It is absolutely important that we fill out the form. Marco and the staff, the Complete Count Committee, they have done a great job in getting the word out about the census. There's a lot of work that has, that's been going on for a year and a half or two years to just get ready for the census, but it is absolutely imperative that everybody complete the form.
All right.
Should I say that again?
Sounds good. Anyone have any other questions?
I'll just say, I think, you know, with the students, you know, not returning to campus, and I may have missed this part of the conversation, but it'd probably be a good idea for us to remove, you know, the, the census ID code completely from any communication with the students, seeing as how they're not going to be back in Greenville, so.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the final item.
Thank you, Mayor. The final item this evening is a presentation by the Pitt County Health Director, Dr. John Silvernell, and I'll call it Dr. Silvernell.
He worked this out perfect, too. He walked right in as we were ending up.
We were sweating it out just a little bit. We certainly do appreciate the doctor has, we know that he has been incredibly busy, and he is running from meeting to meeting.
Thank, thank you for being here and taking time out of your schedule, we appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. There's a handout coming around for you, I'll give you a second to receive that, and I'll let you know, this is the exact briefing I gave county commissioners on Monday at their board meeting.
Thank you.
And wanted to share that with you. I also gave this to our county Board of Health on Tuesday. The numbers are changing so fast, the numbers are, are a little dated in there, but I do have current numbers to share with you, and then I left some time for, for questions as well.
Can we put him on the, the one that has the camera?
The one that has the...
You want me to move to the other podium?
Does, does that one do the camera from up above?
I don't have slides, no.
Okay, we're good.
No, I have, I have my paper copy, I wasn't sure what your projection capability was.
So we're good, just stick to the camera.
We're good.
I brought it on paper for y'all.
We're good, thank you.
Okay. So COVID-19 is a novel coronavirus, it's what we call an emerging infection, first recognized in late December 2019 in China, the Wuhan province, or city of Wuhan, the Hube province of China. The majority of cases remain in China at this time. And I stress that this is a dynamic, rapidly changing situation, and information presented tonight is likely to become outdated very quickly. So what are coronaviruses? Coronaviruses are a large group of virus that produce both human and animal disease. Human coronaviruses, which are really four main types, produce mostly upper and lower respiratory tract infections, they include things like winter colds, bronchitis, and occasionally pneumonia, even in healthy young adults, occasionally pneumonia. They also, there's a poorly characterized group of human coronaviruses that produce gastroenteritis or essentially a diarrheal illness. So what is a novel coronavirus? A novel coronavirus is a newly evolved virus to which humans have little or no immunity. In the case of COVID-19, an animal virus became able to infect humans, and it's believed that that virus came from bats. The genetics of it suggest that it was a bat-derived coronavirus. COVID-19 is the third such virus to be able to do this. SARS and MERS were the other two, SARS goes back to the early 2000s, MERS goes back to 2012, that's Middle East Respiratory Syndrome. The next page has a diagram on it that, that tries to show why these things are scary to public health and to our elected officials and to the general public, for that matter. If you were to imagine being down at the, at the ocean or down at the river where the tides change, an, an emerging infection is one that breaks the surface of the water, and the first thing we see are the sickest folks. So we see the folks that die, and then we see the folks that get hospitalized, and then eventually we start to see the folks that just need medical care and can be treated as outpatients. And often there's a very large burden of disease that is mildly asymptomatic or perhaps even asymptomatic in the population. So initially, when you see the sickest patients first, your numbers look very frightening because I'm, you're seeing the deaths, so if we've got 100 cases and we've got 20, 20 people that died in that first 100 cases, it looks like we have a 20% case fatality rate. As time goes on and more is learned of the infection, we generally see those, those rates drop. And we expect that the, if you did the crudest calculation now, you'd come up with something north of 3%. We think the real case fatality rate with this is probably around 0.9%, or less than 1%. The challenges of, of novel infections, generally there's little or no experience in treating these infections in the medical community. There's limited diagnostic capabilities, that includes no test or a very limited ability to test for these infections. There's also generally tends to be limited treatment options, or sometimes no treatment options for that infection. And in most cases, there's no vaccine available. You know, an infection that emerges in December, three months later, it's very hard to develop a vaccine in three months' time that, that we can administer to people safely. Other challenges include misinformation. There's a lot of misinformation out there, especially in the era of social media, there's a, there's a number of conspiracy theories out there about the virus. And then unfortunately in society, there's mistrust of government at, at multiple levels in society as well. If we move on to specifics, and again, I'm sorry, I did not have a chance to change the numbers on the, on the actual paper slides.
Dr. Silvernell, if you have some numbers, is there a way that you could just move to the other podium, that it, so that we could show it on the...
It's on a posted note, but if you want me to move over there?
Oh, it's on a posted note?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. So if we look at globally right now, there are, as of late this afternoon, 127,863 cases. In the United States, they were reporting 1,323 cases. In North Carolina, we had 15 cases. In Pitt County, we still have no confirmed cases as of close of business today. The deaths globally, there were 4,718 deaths globally, 38 deaths in the United States, no deaths in North Carolina, and since we don't have any cases in Pitt County yet, no deaths in Pitt County.
Do you mind going back over those again, me people watching at home, it's, I was going to throw them really quick.
Okay. Globally, 127,863 cases. Global deaths, 4,718 cases. U.S. cases... U.S. cases, 1,323. U.S. deaths, 38. North Carolina cases, 15. Zero deaths in North Carolina at this time. Pitt County has no confirmed cases and no deaths from coronavirus 19. Questions or comments before we move on?
I have a question. I think you mentioned, I'm not sure of the exact word, but something about 0.9% fatality rate you felt like was a more realistic rate versus the 3 to 3.5 that we've seen. Can you expand on that?
There's some of our, some of our federal sources at CDC are saying that this is probably about 0.9%, a little less than 1%. Problem, death rates or case fatality rates are calculated at deaths over cases. And the problem is, you need to get through the cases to know how many folks survive.
Right.
So if you just take the deaths over the total number of cases. And then we also know that we're underestimating the number of cases out there right now. So we expect that as the denominator grows, that that rate is gonna fall just from the mathematics of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bell, she's got a question, too.
How many tests do we have available in Pitt County?
The, we don't actually, the test kits or collection kits, the commercial manufacturers provide. The hospital has them and has been doing swabs on folks. LabCorp and Quest are providing commercial kits, and as far as I know, there is no supply problem with those.
Okay. How many have, how many tests have been completed in Pitt County?
In Pitt County? I don't have an exact number for you, sir. We have sent a relatively small number right now. As of, as of today, probably about a half dozen. We have some that are pending, but it's still a relatively small number. Again, some of that is based on the, the guidance as to who should be tested. Before LabCorp went live with their test on last, on last Friday, all testing had to be approved by the state lab before they would accept it and run the test. And they had a fairly strict guideline on who they would test and who they wouldn't test.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley.
But did, it sounded like you were suggesting that guideline might have changed.
I'm sorry?
It sounded like you were suggesting that guideline might have changed. Previously, before LabCorp went online, you had to follow it, you had to find, there was a strict protocol.
Mm-hmm.
Now that LabCorp is online, what's the protocol?
Any physician who has clinical suspicion of the disease can order the test through LabCorp.
So that would be a physician, though?
Mm-hmm. Well, physician, a nurse practitioner, a licensed healthcare provider. So they can, they can perform the swabs and then send the labs, send the, send the swabs to LabCorp and have that test run.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head or a rough estimate of what the fatality rate of the flu is for this season?
Right now, and that's coming in the presentation to kind of put this in perspective. If you look to page 11, the flu numbers are there for this season, Mr. Mayor. For the influenza season 2019 to 2020, which officially ends on March 31st, that's when we cut off our flu surveillance reports, although flu season generally lasts well into spring. At this point, there are estimated to be 32 million U.S. cases of influenza. I didn't put it on the slide, but it's estimated there were 310 hospitalizations, 310,000 hospitalizations from influenza this year. CDC is projecting the U.S. death, deaths at 18,000 from influenza this season, and currently, there are 125 pediatric deaths across the country.
Thank you.
What is the, what's the timetable as far as a return on those tests that are being done at LabCorp?
LabCorp right now, I've been told, is about four days turnaround time. The state lab is about 24 hours, but again, they're much more selective about who they take, and they're still requiring approval by state epidemiology before they will run a test. So we've tried to reserve those for folks that are in the hospital for rapid turnaround time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Protecting ourselves, and there is some good news in this, in that most individuals with this infection will suffer a mild illness, and that probably represents about 80% of the folks that get infected with COVID-19. And my colleague, Dr. Ramsey, pointed out to me, said, John, you know, we have great experience treating a virus with similar infectivity, that being influenza. So we have, you know, experience in treating a virus with similar transmissibility and If we move on, there are really four things that we can do right now to help protect ourselves. First is hygiene, isolation, quarantine, and social distance, and I'll make a couple remarks about each of those going forward. Hygiene includes things like hand washing. I know there's been a great panic over, well, I can't get hand sanitizers. Plain old soap and water works just fine. It's not as convenient, you can't necessarily carry it in your pocket, but you can, you know, when you get to a sink, wash up with soap and water, and that will effectively remove the virus from your hands, should it be there. Covering coughs and sneezes. Again, don't sneeze and cough into your hands, sneeze and cough into an elbow to try and contain that material, and to try to avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth while you wash your hands. One of the things that we've tried to weave into our influenza messaging this year and also into our COVID-19 messaging is that you should stop smoking. Smoking and vaping irritates your lungs and respiratory passages, potentially making it easier for infections to invade your body. Isolation, the definition of isolation is the separation of infected persons from others during the period of communicability. So we isolate known or suspected cases. So any patient right now that is tested is placed in isolation pending the test results. If they're sick enough to be in the hospital, they're isolated in an isolation room at the hospital. If they are not sick enough to be in the hospital, they are isolated at home. Quarantine is the limitation of freedom of movement of well persons who are suspected to have been exposed to an infectious agent. Quarantine is generally prescribed for the, the usual incubation of the infectious agent. In the case of COVID-19, it's 14 days is felt to be the, the upper limits of the incubation period. In one study, the median time to infection was three days after exposure, but we have had some folks at 14. And so that is the, that is the prescribed quarantine period in this. Initially, as a, as a point of information, the health director can issue a quarantine order up to 30 days. Generally, we, we have to issue an order that's commensurate with the least restrictive timeframe. So if an incubation period is seven days, I can't quarantine you for 14. And if I, for some reason, needed to quarantine you for more than 30 days, I need to have a court order to do that. Social distancing, we've heard a lot about that. I'm sure you listened to the governor's remarks this afternoon and their guidance, their written guidance is still forthcoming. It had not been received by close of business today. Social distancing includes things like closing schools and churches, movie theaters, perhaps restaurants as examples, allowing employees to work from home or work remotely where able. Obviously, some folks that are direct customer service folks, they can't work from home. A bus driver can't work from home. I can't see patients from home. So some folks do still have to be, be hands-on in their job. And reconsidering sick time use and allowance for the duration of the outbreak, so that those who are sick and may not have enough sick time to, to stay out for the prescribed period can do so without fear of financial harm to themselves.
Councilmember Smiley.
Before you move on from that, you know, are there, I mean, there's a lot of community meetings and stuff like that. Can you maybe touch base on if some of those are candidates for...
Yeah, the, the governor's guidance today has, that was issued, at least orally, we have not seen the written version of the governor's guidance yet, suggests that meetings where 100 people or more would be gathered should be canceled or postponed. So if your church has more than 100 peoples, and that might, more than 100 people at a worship session, that might suggest that that should be postponed or delivered in some other fashion. I know our church is looking at, at ways to do that online and through other mediums besides having folks in church directly. They did not make any recommendation for school closing yet. They've still held off on school closing recommendations.
And the governor, if I recall, the governor said that that guidance became active tomorrow.
Becomes effective tomorrow. That's correct.
And so, you know, whether or not there's a, that's statewide, right? It's not, that's not only in communities that have an active diagnosis or something like that. He's saying statewide, and the guidance is, you know, start now. If you have a, if there's a meeting schedule that has more than 100 people in it, cancel it.
That's canceled, yes. State Health Department's canceled travel for all of their folks. They canceled the state health director's meeting, where normally, we go to rally as a group and meet with state health department officials the third week of the month. They have canceled that for next week, and it will be done as a telephone conference call setting for us. I was at a program yesterday morning for tobacco control, and our instructor was from Charlotte, and she had gotten the order that travel was, all travel was suspended. So she was able to do her, when we were a group of less than 100, she was able to do her meeting yesterday and then go back to Charlotte.
So, and, excuse me if I'm asking you questions, you don't, I know you said the written guidance isn't out, so forgive me if there's, you know, you just can't answer this, but, so, you know, I guess, you know, we can understand, you know, there's a PTA meeting that's gonna have 300 people in it, in a, in the lunchroom at the school. That seems clear. That's a meeting with 100 people. You know, what about a, you know, a soccer game or a, you know, you know, a track meet? I don't know, something like that, that it was less clear that it was a meeting, that it was more of an event, or it might be outside with, you know, spread out over, you know, over several acres even. Is that a, does that fall into the governor's guidance?
I suppose if there were more than 100 athletes at that track meet, that it probably would. If it was less than that, depending on the size of the track teams, then it might be under that. Outside, where the volume of distribution, meaning they're in the, in the ambient atmosphere, there's more air for the, for the infection to be dispersed in, helps reduce the spread of virus. When we talk about this, we look at probably a four to six foot, if I had it and I'm coughing, I can spread that probably four to six feet by droplets. So if you're more than six feet away from me, you're probably not gonna be exposed. The guidance that has come down from the federal government, from CDC, says that you probably would need to be around me for 10 minutes within that six-foot distance to be considered exposed. So at a track meet where if you were running races or throwing the shot put and you were spread out far enough, that probably would be still okay, unless it was a very large meet, and some track meets bring, you know, five or six schools together. So in a setting like that, a big invitational meet probably should be canceled.
And one last question, if you don't mind. What about, what about, you know, gatherings in a facility that aren't technically a meeting, right? You know, it's a, I don't want to be, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it's a facility and lots of people go in there, they're not meeting together, they're just, they have to go in there to conduct business or exercise or, you know, do a, you know, do some sort of activity, and, but they're definitely gonna be, you know, 150, 200 people in the building simultaneously. Is there any, any aspect of the guidance apply to that?
It may. It's kind of hard to say, as I say, I haven't seen the written guidance yet from the state.
I'm not trying to put you on spot, I just...
Yeah. In, in general, what they're suggesting is that we shouldn't be in groups larger than 100, but if I've got it, and I'm in a group of a dozen people, and you're all within six feet of me, then I could potentially give it to a dozen people. So there has to be some individual judgment there based on that guidance from the state in deciding what, what we should cancel as a community or restrict as a community. And also some individual guidance on yourself. If, you know, if you're a healthy young person, you're probably, if you get the infection, you're probably gonna ride it out fine. If you're an older or sicker person, or even if you're a younger person that has underlying medical problems, then you might say, well, you know, I don't want to go to the coffee house tonight or the book club tonight, even a smaller group, so. So I'm not sure where, what the science is behind that number of 100, but that was the number that the state put on it today.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. That was the social distancing. Wanted to tell you about some of the activities that we've done at the health department to try to help us get through this, this outbreak or this pandemic. Certainly, we shared, I have shared messages with local medical providers that started back in February with a message regarding travel infections, the importance of asking about a travel history, which many physicians forget to ask sometimes. And with the, the epic record system that's used in, in many of the, the healthcare facilities here in Greenville, that's been built into the questioning in the system and helps prompt providers to ask those questions. We've released a couple of statements now to local media. We held a group media event at Pitt County Health Department for local media, where I answered questions for three, I guess, all three TV stations here in Greenville. Had a discussion with all the Pitt County department heads on COVID-19 last week, briefed the county commissioners on Monday, and the board of health on Tuesday. We've been working with our county partners and city partners, have been having some conversations with Chief Griffin as well. Have met with our EMS medical director for the county to talk about transport, maybe treat-at-home protocols for EMS, which generally EMS is a treat and transport system, not a treat and leave-at-home system. So that needs a little bit of a different thought process there, and how do we decide if somebody's safe to be left at home or not? And maybe instead of just transporting to the ED, could we take them to an urgent care or some other facility, an alternate care facility, to not overload the ED for folks who really need to be in the ED? Provided some oral and written communication to the Pitt Development Commission, provided written information to Pitt Greenville Airport regarding cleaning. Have been working with Vinted Medical Center and Vinted Health as a whole, with ECU, their Office of Student, of Perspective Health, the Student Health Service, to help them prepare for the return of students. We've had some discussions with the Crossroads Community Shelter about what we would do if a case came up in the shelter there. And I've worked with our local fire departments. Some of you may know, I know Chief Griffin knows, that I'm an old fireman myself, an old firefighter myself, many years in the volunteer service in upstate New York before I moved down here. We have reviewed our, updated our isolation and quarantine plan, and I have our pandemic flu plan under review this time, so that we can review and update that. Last week, we stood up a dedicated page on our website for COVID-19. There's, some people have said that hasn't been updated daily, and there may have been some confusion because there was a created date that was along the top of it. It was created on March 3rd, I think was the date. And when people looked at the website, said, well, this hasn't been updated since March 3rd. No, March 3rd was the creation date. My PIO at the health department and the county PIO update that page every day. So there's, we try to keep the most current links, the most current information on there. That is in your page. It is www.pittcountync.gov/coronavirus is the, the website for that page.
And the city also provides a link to that page on the city's website as well.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And I'm happy to take any other questions, comments, or discussion.
Councilman Meyerhofer.
First of all, Dr. Silvernell, apologies there. Thank you very much for coming out and taking the time. I'm sure you've been quite busy lately. I just want to take you back to the beginning. You, you note here that these upper and lower respiratory tract infections are sometimes referred to as winter colds. So that being said, do you, and in the medical community, do they anticipate that this will dissipate as the weather is changing? Is that going to have any impact whatsoever?
There are some folks that hope, and certainly our hope, that the warmer weather will help decrease the spread of COVID-19. We don't know that for sure. I thought, looking at the global map, that the southern hemisphere, which is in summer now, although it's upstate New York, it feels like summer here in Greenville today. The global map certainly shows that there's activity in the southern hemisphere, perhaps not as intense as in the northern hemisphere, but some of those countries tend to be more rural in the northern hemisphere as well. So I don't know that it's clear that the warmer weather will help diminish the spread of this, but we, but there's certainly hope, and, and some infectious disease experts believe it will. You're welcome.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I guess y'all, y'all have got to probably have this number, but at what amount of cases or active patients would our health system here in Pitt County become distressed?
That's, I, I don't speak for Vinted Health, let me, let me be clear about that. I believe the hospital has something on the order of 106, 106 isolation rooms. And they usually run 150 to 170 ventilator beds a day, as a rough guess. And again, please, I don't speak for Vinted Health, and I know they have a substantial reserve of ventilators, so. So I don't have a good answer for that, Councilman, and, and I'm sorry, but I, I don't do inpatient medicine. My guess is that they could absorb a fair amount of folks. Again, not speaking for Vinted, I know they've had some plans to, if the need be, to cohort folks at other Vinted facilities. They have other hospitals across eastern North Carolina where they could set up ventilators if they needed to as well, so.
How many respirators does Pitt County have?
Pitt County itself? We do not have respirators.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry if you may have mentioned this before. Are there multiple strains of COVID-19, or is it just one? So like, in the event that, like I were to pick up the coronavirus, do I become immune from it, or are there multiple strains of it?
That is somewhat in dispute right now, Mr. Mayor. There are some folks who think if you've had COVID-19, that your body will create antibodies to COVID-19, and you would be immune to reinfection with that virus. That is not clearly known at this time. There had been talk about a mutation or an alternate strain in the virus. I'm not sure how true that is. I have not seen that in a reputable scientific source. I've seen that kind of on the news, so I'm not sure that that's true.
So it's probably, it's really tough to be able to base any type of data based off of how new this virus is?
Yeah. You know, most of our infections, we've had the opportunity to study for years and years and years.
Right.
And this infection, we've had a little over three months, or, you know, about three months of time to study it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
I appreciate, thank you so much for taking your time tonight. We appreciate it. I know you're busy. I got notifications that you ran, I think, WNCT earlier today. Appreciate all that you're doing for our community and all of Pitt County and eastern North Carolina, because a lot of people depend on our region and the Viden Medical Center. So a lot of those patients will be coming into our community to be able to receive treatment for potentially something bad. So we appreciate that.
You're welcome. If you need information, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to try to answer your questions or provide the information to you as well.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, just to follow up on just a little bit of city's response related to the coronavirus. We are, city staff has been working very closely with the Pitt County Health Department, and we greatly appreciate their assistance. Our staff has been meaning to just assess our plans, our policies, and our preparation for the impact of the coronavirus, and that we work hard to continue to provide the services that we provide every day, and we'll continue to do so. That's the only report I have, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
No comment.
Councilmember Smiley?
No comment.
Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels?
I guess I'm going to say, oh, no, I just wanted to share, well, first of all, to thank everyone for all the hard work that you guys are doing with this virus. It's an added addition to what we're already doing every day, and we truly appreciate your hard work and dedication. And also, Saturday morning at 9:00, the West Greenville Health Council will be cleaning up the streets. We'll start at the Housing Authority Building at 9:00 a.m. If anyone wants to join us, be less than 100 people, and we'd like to see you there. Thank you.
All right. And I just want to remind everybody, too, I mean, we've had a lot of changes over the last week, and, you know, be sure to not panic about the coronavirus. There's no reason to panic. And, you know, we're lucky to have Dr. Silvernell here. And make sure that you're listening to those experts, you know. Some of the people that are on TV, they may or may not know what they're talking about, but people like Dr. Silvernell are the ones that deal with this on a day-to-day basis, and that's what they're paid to do, and they're experts at it. So make sure that you pay attention and heed to their recommendations as far as how to prepare and how to treat, potentially, if you were able to, if you got the coronavirus. So make sure you're listening to the professionals that do know what they're talking about.
Now that, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Eyes have it. We are adjourned.